Folks, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And the first item is a pledge. So we all can stand up and recite the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item's roll call.
When am I there? I'm so great.
Breitski?
Here.
Brian Damets?
Here.
Bob Gilianna?
Here.
Michelle Fish?
Here.
Barb Regnet?
Here.
Greg Sims?
Present.
Luther Willian? Nikki Wackowski?
Here.
Rick Burns?
Here. Okay, next item, election officers. The first one is a president. Do you have a nomination for a president?
I nominate Rick Burns.
Second.
Chairman.
Motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye, okay. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, next one, nomination for vice president. I'd like to nominate Bob Gilianna. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Okay. Thank you. Board apartments? Uh, BZA apartment? Do we have a nomination for that? I'd like to nominate-
I nominate Brian Damets. He still wants to do it?
No, wait, no, this is BZ.
Second.
Okay, you're gonna do it?
I need a second.
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
Okay.
We're just discussing the second, like, to make sure when it was-
Okay, hold on a minute. He was talking, yeah. He asked him a question. Okay. So you're gonna nominate Brian as a BZA? Okay. Do we have a second?
Mm-hmm.
Between him and I, we're both second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Okay, thank you. You're in. Okay, next one's DRC apartment.
I nominate Kevin Breitski.
Yeah, I'd like you to second it.
Second.
I want to second that one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Next is approval of minutes for August twenty, uh, twenty-third and September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to approve. Second.
You have second? You got motion and second? All those in favor, say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Any, uh, correspondence at this time?
No.
Okay, the all-new business cases. The first, uh, first case is a DV dash two zero two three dash three eight. Applicant is Francisco Delgado, care of DVG Team Incorporated. Project is Sunfield Farms, major subdivision. Location Northwest Corner, Division Road and five hundred West Valparaiso in Union Township. Zonies RR, rural residential district. Request is design waiver to vary from the following. Section seven point two five pedestrian network standards. And this is a public hearing. So I have to read the rules of conduct.
At a public hearing before the commission, the petitioner and proponent shall first present the facts and arguments in support of the case. Those who oppose the petitioner shall follow. The petitioner shall have rebuttal. It shall be within the discretion of the commission to impose any time limitation that the petitioner or the respondent and to, and to limit public comment to those determined by state statute to be interested parties. Written remonstrances shall be accepted by the commission but need not be read into the commission's, commission's record. This then concludes the public hearing. To maintain orderly procedures, decide shall proceed without interruption by the others. In presentation of a case, the burden shall be upon the petitioner to supply all information necessary for a clear understanding of the problem. The commission may continue the hearing when in its judgment, the petitioner has not provided sufficient evidence on which to make a determination. Every person appearing before the commission shall abide by the order and direction of the president. Discourteous, disorderly, or contemptuous shall be regarded as a breach of the privileges of the commission and shall be dealt with as the commission directs.
Thank you. Okay, sir.
Uh, good evening. I'm Doug Reddick with DVG. Um, the developer of the property is here tonight, Francisco Delgado. Um, he's in the audience here if you have any questions specifically for him. But, uh, we're here tonight about Sunfield Farms. It's a proposed subdivision, uh, located on the west side of five hundred west and just north of Division Road. Wraps around Saint Elizabeth Seaton Church. As many of you know where that is. Two things tonight, but we're starting with the, um, waiver, um, regarding perimeter network standard. We are, we have, well, we have an entrance on Division Road. We have two entrances on, I'm sorry. We have one entrance on five hundred west and two entrances on Division Road. Uh, we have very little frontage on five hundred west, so it doesn't really apply to that street.
I think so.
But as far as division goes, we are putting a perimeter path all the way along Division, uh, so there'll be, uh, access there. But what we're really talking about tonight is, you know, do we need a perimeter path along the west side of the subdivision and the north side of the subdivision where we have, uh, but, um, undeveloped land? Uh, this is a, our, our subdivision. Their lots are large or one acre or larger. Uh, we are planning sidewalks throughout the entire subdivision. We'll have sidewalks on both sides of all the streets, so we have a pedestrian network within the subdivision. Um, ordinance, it was a little confusing to me, but we understood we needed a long division. Uh, we met with staff to discuss, do we really need a path along the west side of the subdivision when we have sidewalks, you know, throughout the subdivision? Uh, and then likewise to the north, there's a little bit of, uh, property there that's being developed into a small subdivision, um, where we didn't even stub a street to that property because they didn't, they didn't feel it was necessary and the owners didn't want that either. So that's what we're here tonight, to discuss, uh, the waiver from the standard for the pa- the path along basically the west side and the north side of the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. So a public hearing? Everybody who wants to speak in favor of this? In favor?
That, that would be no, no side of-
Okay, if you're gonna speak, you have to, uh, step up, please. By the speaker, state your name and, uh, address.
My name's Henry Kipers. I own the property on the west side. I'm not opposed to the subdivision. Just, that is saying there would not be no public walkway along the west side and the north side, but still a thirty-foot berm, uh, herquay as we talked in the springtime.
Right, we are gonna have a landscape buffer between the properties.
That, that-
That's your question?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor? Seeing none, anybody want to speak against or any questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Back to the board. Kevin?
I think it's just a practical matter and to further buffer the adjoining, it just makes sense to me to eliminate that as a requirement.
Nikki?
I'm good.
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 Brian?
Essentially, we got confirmation from both-
Yeah.
-sides that they don't need or want it. Either or. I'm good.
You're good? Bob?
No issues.
Commissioner?
I do have a question. Um, what, what is the reason that we had this zoning in place? That he needs to request a variance in the first place? So, I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand our whole philosophy when we put the, you know, when we put the zoning in place and the ordinance in place and if there's any ramifications for debating from that in this particular case.
So for a major subdivision, they are required to do perimeter pathways? And it was intended to, uh, increase or allow for better connectivity to other existing subdivisions?
Okay.
In this case, there, there really is just farmland agricultural around it. But they are proposing to put a sidewalk along Division, you know, as it kind of heads over to Lake Eliza and also through church.
Yeah.
And they are, in addition, they've agreed to do a full width road and they have sidewalks on each side of that. They didn't ask for any reduction in sidewalks or-
Okay.
They have quite a few pathways.
Okay, great. Thank you.
How long has this been the, the rule?
Oh, seven. I believe it was in the oh-seven UDO redo. Would be right.
Cause I see a lot of neighborhoods that don't have-
Those are kind of pretty, the last O UDO. The perimeter, the perimeter, um, connectivity has been part of it. The only thing that has probably been reduced since the oh-seven was, I do believe we got rid of the landscape of what is surrounding developments and also, but not the pedestrian. But yeah, part of the reason why it became such a push and became part of the standard is because we had way too many subdivisions that didn't have sidewalks. And the subdivision without sidewalks, without connectivity, we've learned it could cause all kinds of other problems. But something covered is written this way, but this also has the ability, it also has the sign waiver to come in and say, hey, I understand the original logic to this, but I have a unique situation. It doesn't fit. This feels like one of those unique situations that don't fit. And so that's gonna be the proper way for this to flow through the process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, award design waiver twenty twenty-three thirty-eight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Barb, second? Okay. A ballot vote?
I think one of the nice things about the ordinance of two thousand seven, there's an appellate process and at least we take the high road and start dismiss different facets of the design, if it's practical.
She's hungry today. Weren't this bad on Saturday, I'll tell you that. She tried to stab me with a shovel on Saturday. Expo Center, yeah.
I had a little bit. I had- I had knives. It was scary.
Yeah.
It was the Master Gardener Garden Show and I was doing, you know, of crafty. It's like crafting knives. Yeah. Think it'd go nice. Oh, it was a bit bigger. Really good, though.
Kevin Breitski, yes. Brian Damets, yes. Bob Gilianna, yes. Pamela Michelle Fish, yes. Barb Regnet, yes. Greg Sims, yes. Nikki Wackowski, yes. Rick Burns, yes. Uh, the motion for the waiver is approved, eight to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next case, MJ dash two two dash zero zero one six. Applicant Francisco Delgado, care of DVG Team Incorporated. Can you hear me now?
A little bit.
A little bit. Is that up?
Can you turn up the volume?
Turn it up a little bit. Okay. Okay, I'll start over again. MJ dash two two dash zero zero one six. Applicant Francisco Delgado, care of DVG Team Incorporated. Project is Sunfield Farms, major subdivision. Location Northwest Corner, Division Road and five hundred west Valparaiso, Union Township. Zonies RR, rural residential district. Request is primary plat for a proposed sixty-two lot subdivision, major subdivision.
Hey, once again, Doug Reddick from DVG, representing Francisco Delgado. Uh, we are here to seek primary plat approval for a sixty-two lot, single-family residential subdivision. The property shown on the screens, it's about a hundred and twenty acres in size. Uh, but because the lots are all well on septic, the, 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 the net is only about sixty-two home sites. Uh, the minimum lot size is an acre that's required for your, uh, septic permitting purposes. So on the primary plat that's shown, we show every, approximate location of every home, approximate location of every septic system. A lot of people ask what the green color is. That's, uh, area that was mapped out, uh, for unsuitable soil. That's area where you cannot, but it's, thank you, Kelly, uh, cannot have a septic system, so we have to kind of plan around all that. We have a soil scientist come out and look at the soil. He does borings on every lot, hundreds of soil borings to determine, um, the best location for the septic systems. We have a diagonal line, uh, running through there. That's actually a NIPSCO easement and that's kind of why the layout is what it is. There's a pipeline in the ground. Uh, they actually worked on it over the summer. Maybe some of you saw the construction going on out there. They, they replaced a pipeline, uh, in that area. So that's kind of why the, like, the road layout is the way it is because we're paralleling that existing easement. We've been through with engineering. I'm sure there's a staff report for that. You guys have a very robust stormwater ordinance. Uh, we met all the requirements, uh, the retention. We have three large detention basins. They're, they hold acres and acres of water in the event of a rain. Uh, we released to the same point that the water goes now. We extensively spent time, um, looking ahead to when these homes are built. Again, this is a project that's gonna get built over many years. This, we're not gonna build it all in one phase. Um, sixty-two homes. This could be a five or ten or twelve-year build. I, I don't even know the answer to that. But the septic systems all have to have drainage to, to function properly and that wasn't always a requirement, but we went, spent extra effort to make sure every lot, every septic system has a place to discharge their perimeter drain, which is a very important thing to keep these septic systems functioning properly. So we've been through the ordinance. Uh, we've worked hard to address everything. Really believe we met everything. Again, I'm sure there'll be a staff report regarding engineering. I can answer any questions that you might have, but we are here tonight to seek primary plat approval.
Thank you. Okay, so a public hearing? Anybody want to speak in favor of this? In favor? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm Barbara Gillican. I'm representing, uh, the church, Saint Elizabeth Seaton Church. Are we having mound systems or we having regular systems or septic?
Okay. We will answer that after your question. We're gonna have all the questions first.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
Okay, on the west side where the church is, is there going to be a mound or something that will break it between the church and the subdivision? Or is it gonna be flat-lined with sidewalks?
Okay, any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay. Anybody else I could speak? Or any, any questions or opposed? I don't see none. Okay, we'll turn it back to you to, uh, answer those two questions.
Yes, the, uh, the church is in the southeast corner there. We are planning, uh, to answer her second question first, a landscape berm which is required by ordinance between our project and the church. So it's on our land. It's not part of the lots, but there's a thirty-foot landscape area on the west side of the church and on the north side of the church, um, that, so there will be a, a, a green buffer area.
Okay.
Being the two-
How high is that berm?
It varies. It's, it's not a high berm. It's just a few feet, but it will be planted as well. It's, there's a landscape plan that was submitted as part of this that's been reviewed as well. And I believe all the three of the septic systems that are proposed are conventional. I think there's a couple up at the north end, northwest corner, that, uh, the soil scientists thought a mound system would be better, but virtually ninety-five or percent will be conventional septic system.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ma'am, did he answer your, your, did he answer your questions?
Yeah, okay. Okay, with the septics and everything, where is the wells going? I mean, are they in the, because you have the septics are going to the back because you have all of this property. Are they gonna verify, one's going in front, some's going in the back because you have to have so many cars between the well and the septic? And with, and you have fifty-two, uh, lots or sixty?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two lots, okay. Are we gonna have enough room? Because I'm out there with a septic and well. And with everybody coming in with septic, and I was told that you're gonna have mound systems and not regular sept, you know, septics.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and respond.
Again, we've worked with your health department. We've worked with our soil scientists to determine what type of system, septic system is, is needed. Um, mound, mound systems are used when the water table is real high, glacial till is high. Uh, he didn't see that here, so, and they work very similarly. A mound system is basically the same thing, but it's, it's built above existing ground and then covered with a, well, it has a sand base in it. Uh, and they work well, uh, but again, it's, it's, it's a more expensive option and it's typically not the first choice.
Okay.
Um, as far as septic systems go. And then the wells, each home will have a well. It has to have a certain separation between the septic system, any septic system and any well, but the lots are large. So typically, when the septic system's in the back, the well will be in the front of the house, uh, to keep adequate separation. And that's why we do that. Again, it's all governed by your state health department and your local department.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to close the public hearing and turn it over to the board. Commissioner?
I, I did have a question. Uh, it says health department, recommendation that septic areas not be disturbed with pond spoils. Can you just talk about what that was? You know?
I can.
So when they're digging a pond, to its depth, the spoils or the remains from that dig out are not to be placed in the area that it would designate as septic fields to be dug.
Okay, and the reason for that and where are they gonna take it then?
Anywhere but there. That ground, the remain, uh, as undisturbed and compacted as it is, that's the main point.
Oh, okay, okay.
But, yeah, undisturbed and compacted.
Yeah.
We'll find other outlet, outlaw areas.
Yeah. The intention is to, um, we'll actually survey and lay out where those septic systems are gonna go. They'll flag them off while they're under construction so they know it's a no-go zone. They don't want to drive on them. They don't want to compact it.
I was gonna ask, is related, is that the red boxes we're seeing?
Yes.
So those are the septics?
Yes.
So you can already see where the septics will be?
Yeah, we, we know where, we, that's where the soil borings were done. We know where we, we're gonna put them, within, you know, a reasonable, uh, amount. So, um, we, we plan for that. The roads typically are elevated just a little bit above existing ground. We have to remove any topsoil, you know, uh, before we could build a road. But then the home sites are built a couple of feet above the road. So a lot of that excess material will get laid behind the curbs and up to the front of the house. Um, and this, as well as in the landscape areas and the bermed areas, we'll be putting that material there as well. We try to keep all the dirt on site.
And then one other question, uh, and I don't know if this is you, Kevin, that made this comment on, because it says surveyor. I don't know if that's you or not, but, um, it says insufficient sewer capacity to use, utilize Lake Eliza conservancy, and I don't know what that is.
Um, good, it's a good question. We looked into that before we actually got too far down the road with the design. We looked at the option of connecting to Lake Eliza's sewer system. They do have, the subdivision immediately south of here called Lake Eliza.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they have their own little treatment facility.
Okay.
Um, but they told us point blank that they did not have additional capacity to serve something-
Okay. And then that's why you decided with the septic?
Because don't forget, if we had sewer, we'd have a lot more lots. And, uh, because of the lot size difference, so they felt that they could not do it. Now, they are planning on some expansions down the road, but it doesn't help us in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, great, thank you.
It, it was me. Um, part of our ordinance requires engineering feasibility if there's any approximate publicly owned wastewater treatment or water supply. Uh, we want to encourage the use of those public facilities. However, as Doug said, uh, Lake Eliza doesn't appear to have the capacity. We're having issues with prairie landing as we speak. Uh, it'd be wonderful if they were large enough and the investment was made, but, uh, here's where we're at.
Thank you. Bob?
I like her questions and that answers everything I thought.
Pam?
I'm good.
Good.
I just wondered about the red. Got that, Andrew?
Good.
Uh, I, I'd like to just speak to the mound systems. They're a great alternative to septic systems. Not absolutely necessary. Conventional will work just as well. However, if the conventional fails, then we need to go to a set aside. They can't be put in the same place. The beauty in the mound system is it can be deconstructed and reconstructed right at the same location. So it's, it's more efficient that way, but starting price typically is around twenty thousand dollars. It's an, yeah, and they're more. I said starting price, Doug, but they, uh, typically can run more, but in the long run, sometimes they're more cost-effective, but that's over, you know, uh, the, the engineer life of the septic system might be twenty to forty years. And it's at that time that it, it could prove out. For commercial sites, typically the state determines for churches, for commercial properties, uh, what the requirements are, such as the church. And it's not unusual for them to go with mound systems. Uh, in Indiana, we had mound systems probably for ten, twenty years before we allowed residential mound.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, what case number is this? MJ twenty-two zero zero sixteen, the preliminary plat for Sunfield Farms', uh, major subdivision.
Second.
You have a motion and second? A ballot vote?
Well, I should mention too, somebody asked about the, or madam, you asked about the well separation. That's a state requirement depending on the porosity of the soils. It'll be either fifty or a hundred feet distance, so- Yeah, that's- But that's why they have the well separated from the septic so you don't have influence to your well.
Why'd you put GOIE on yours?
Really, seriously? See that every day?
I know. It's your sheet. Morning, super maroon.
Can I put an answer on that or just sign my name?
I'm just in black.
Kevin Breitski, yes. Brian Damets, yes. Bob Gilianna, yes. Pamela Michelle Fish, yes. Barb Regnet, yes. Greg Sims, yes. Nikki Wackowski, yes. Rick Burns, yes. A primary plat. MJ dash twenty-two dash zero-zero-one-six is approved, eight to nothing.
Thank you very much.
Approved, thank you. Okay, next case, MJ two-zero-two-three-three-two. Applicant is, uh, Mark Pryor. Project is Bets Major Subdivision. Location five-seven-six west, one hundred north Valparaiso, Union Township. Zonies RR, rural residential district. Request primary plat for a proposed two-lot major subdivision.
Good evening, Mark Pryor, five-seven-six west, one hundred north, representing, um, here for the Bets Major Subdivision. Looking for approval, primary plat. Any questions?
Okay, that's it?
Yep.
Okay, it's a public hearing, anybody want to speak in, in favor of this case? Or any questions? Yes, sir.
I've, I've seen where Mark, Mark is proposing to build, I, I farmed in the area and I, I don't see any trouble with it being any concern in our county.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, anybody want to speak opposed or against or any questions? Seeing none? I'm going to close the public hearing. Kevin?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Maybe I need a hearing aid. No, I don't see any issues with this, we've had a lot of discussion about it, it's a interesting piece of land.
I'm good, just glad large lots.
Very good, Pam?
I'm good.
Brian?
Just a side question, just for my education, the reason this is a major subdivision is because it was already broken up into four lots.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, Bob?
I have no issues.
No issue.
Commissioner? Okay, do we have a motion?
Mo, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yeah, you have motion second? Appellate voting? Clicking together.
We're sticking there.
I trust you.
No more brownies for this, for the surveyor's office.
I'll miss them.
Yeah, yeah, like Purdue deserves. I'm second guessing.
I'm learning so much tonight.
Eighteen ninety-three recipe. Yeah. Heck, no.
They're gone.
No.
Come on.
Yeah, yeah, look how that got me.
Yeah.
Help, worse.
No, I was just going to be finding a good drainage, it should be better.
Uh, Kevin Brightsky, yes. Ryan Damit, yes. Bob Gilianna, yes. Pamela Mishler Fish, yes. Barbara Regnet, yes. Greg Sims, yes. Nicky Wacowski, yes. Rick Burns, yes. This case, major, major subdivision twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, uh, is approved, eight to nothing.
Okay, you're approved?
Thank you.
Okay. Any, yeah, any other, uh, matters or issues in front of the board? Nothing, Kelly?
No.
Anybody have any?
Nope.
Okay, do we have motion to adjourn?
So move to adjourn? Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Although opposed, aye.
You stay here.
It is adjourned.
It is quiet.
Hey, how you doing?
Quieter tonight, it seems like, hi, I don't know why, and it is, maybe they're shoved back too far.
How are you, sir?
Pretty good.